Well, I called our work session to order here at 5:30 PM. And just to remind everybody, we are videoing this as part of our Advanced Ed certification, which we're undertaking right now. So, thank you for being here and turn over to Don.
First thing we do, again, if we want to present some of our data, this time we're, since we're talking about Advanced Ed investigation, we want to share with you some of the information we are collecting as we prepare for our Advanced Ed accreditation. Dr. Good's going to share with you, she's chairing the committee, she and Kim Ryan are the two people who are doing all the legwork, getting everything ready for us. So, they're going to share a little bit of information briefly so to give you an idea of what type of information we're collecting, what we're hearing as we prepare to get this information to our Advanced Ed dissertation team.
For those of you who don't know, Advanced Ed is the latest iteration of Saks accreditation. Those of you who were back with us in the day will know about Saks. It looks significantly different now. Almost everything is done online and we'll have an engagement review coming in early March to give us some feedback. They now have suites of tools that we can use as part of the accreditation process. They include surveys, inventories, diagnostic tools, inventories and observations. We've got the results of two of those tools to share with you tonight. The first one is the system quality factors. This is a self-rating. It is broken down into seven areas: clear direction, healthy culture, high expectations, impact of instruction, resource management, efficacy of engagement, and implementation capacity. And within those seven areas, there are 54 indicators. And we rate ourselves on this. So, you know, the results are ours and it gives us some guidance as to where we want to go in the future. We also gave the surveys. There were four surveys: parents, staff, elementary student, and middle high school. They give us a report that shows us our highest scoring items and our lowest scoring items. This is broken down into five survey sections of each survey. There's a purpose and direction section, governance and leadership, teaching and assessing for learning, resources and support systems, and using results for continuous improvement. Only one section of one survey fell below the network average. They report to us how we line up compared to other systems around the world because Advanced Ed is not just in this country. They assess school systems everywhere. The only one that fell below the network average was on the elementary student survey under purpose and direction, and that rating was a 2.89 out of 3. The network average was 2.9, so we were really, really close. We noticed some trends as we looked at this data. These kinds of tools allow us to triangulate data so that we don't have to take one score on one day and run with it. But what we saw was our highest area was high expectations. It was one of the highest indicators on three out of four surveys. And the parents' survey said 88% agreed or strongly agreed that their school has high expectations for all students in all classes. Our areas for growth, we noted two. The first one, in our parent's survey, there is an indicator that says our school's governing body does not interfere with the operation or leadership of our school. This indicator was one of the five lowest on the parent's survey. And it was also reflected in the system quality factors. There were several indicators about the board leadership that fell below average. And I will say, this was the last board, not the current board. The other area where we saw some room for improvement was in parent engagement. All four of the surveys had indicators that addressed this, and they were among the lowest five indicators on each survey. But you need to remember, our lowest scoring items still gave us averages that were above the network average on all these surveys except in one area, so it's all relative.
Who was involved in doing these ratings?
The SQFs, the system quality factors, were rated by the district Advanced Ed team. The student surveys, since we have one to one now, we pushed out icons to student computers and to staff computers, and they took that survey. And when we didn't get as many parent responses as we wanted, we also pushed out the parent's survey onto their students' desktop so that parents had access to be able to take that survey on their child's computer.
And Advanced Ed does have a minimal percentage in those areas that you have to have our parents participating, teachers participating, and staff participating?
Is there an expectation either internally within our district or from Advanced Ed that we take these areas for growth and translate them into an action plan or improvement plan?
These were the areas that we need to show that we are going to be focusing on, yes. On top of this. What are our plans to look at as far as possibly revisiting some of these scores?
We felt like that the ratings that had to do with the board, because they were from the board before, that we probably needed to go back and look at those again and make sure that that is what we really think our ratings should be. And so, we will do that before we submit this to Advanced Ed because we want to be fair, but we want to be honest. So, we're going to come back and look at it again.
Our Advanced Ed team comes in on March 4th, remember I've been giving you all that date to keep over that evening. We have to put everything online four to six weeks before that, so within the next couple of weeks, we will finalize all of our scorings, finalize all of our reports. And the scoring is being done at the district level and schools are doing some of these as well. All of this will be finalized, put on to our workspace with Advanced Ed for the visitation team to be viewing before they come to visit us on the board. We don't want to take the time to go over all the scores, but we want to show you what type of information we're collecting. And this is only a part of the Advanced Ed, this is the survey part. We also have to provide all kinds of documentation that we're doing certain things. So, we'll be, there are the district quality factors, we have to document we're doing this, we're doing this. And we decide what types of things we want to submit. The schools are doing the same thing. So, this is all an extensive process we do to show the visitation team what, coming in, what all we think we're doing, what are our strengths, and what are our weaknesses. We didn't get information ahead of time, what we see as being our weakest areas. Then they will come in and they will not wait us on these quality factors. They have a separate set of standards that correlate back to this. And the visiting team will rate our district, not our schools, but our district on those standards that will then come back to us for their final rating, final determination if we meet accreditation, what types of areas, if they find areas that they want to recommend that we do improvement plans on, et cetera, et cetera. That's part of the annual, every five-year process. We already district accredited now as opposed to being individually school accredited the way we were. We've been district accredited 15 years now? 15. Right? Any questions about where we're going, what we're doing here? You will be very involved in this beginning March 4th, okay?
There'll be individual meetings.
On the 4th, that Sunday night, there'll be just a meeting greet of the team. On Monday, and we do not know the times yet, Dr. Good's working on his calendar, working with our chairperson, but there'll be individual, there'll be either individual or two at a time interviews with visiting team coming in. Then in the past, on the last day, the last thing, they had a call board meeting on that Wednesday. That has been changed. They do not have a call board meeting anymore. We do have to have the board chair or someone from the board sitting in with an exit interview session, but not a call board meeting anymore. Okay? All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dr. Good. Next item. And I'm going to get back in. It tied this up, though. We didn't talk about it. I know, I can talk about it.
Sounds like harmony.
This is where, I want to show you, I'm not looking at detail. Here is the architect's timeline for construction of our new grade 6-7 school. This is the second version of it, but this shows the timeline for us to complete the different processes in order to be completed by December 19th of 2020. Our goal to open a new grade 6-7 school January of 2021. So, that's the goal. We've challenged ourselves and this shows the types of things we need to be doing. We have been doing these things. We've already begun the process of needing to get input into what needs to be inside the building. We are now on version five, and I'll show you that in a moment. But as you'll see here, right now, there's things that have got to, we got to go, we got to be doing some things. So, that's why I'm, what I plan to do is to appoint a group. This shows you the, if you want to look at it, the actual, this is version five, where we go through and look at the building and what is needed. We're at meetings with the principal of the middle school right now. Last week, we had meetings with, one meeting with the content teachers. We had another meeting with the connections teachers to get input from them. The building square footage has changed from 190,000 square feet to 200,252. We know we've, we've got to get it down a little more to get back to the budget. This was the dreaming stage. What would you like to see? So, we know there's some tweaking that can be done to get it back down to the budget. This was where we looked at everything that we think would really like having, and that's where we've developed. And you're welcome to look through and see what types of spaces we're looking at, how many. We are looking at having every classroom be 750 square foot minimum. Typically, the state requires 600 square foot for high schools, 660 for middle schools, so we only require 660. It does require 750 for elementary. So, we're going in and building the 750 as our goal so that if down the road, some changes need to be done, we have the space available for it. As well as the fact that if you put students in a room with only 600 square feet or 660, there's not room. So, the 750 will still be very useful even in the middle school classroom. So, this, you can look at this individually. But here's where I want to show you, my step is to form a transition team. This would be the group that sort of at the top that coordinates all of the other activities. We've got to make sure that everything that needs to be done, we've got to look at grade five transition to grade, to the grade six. We've got to look at what's needed in grade 6-7 school. We've got to look at 7 transition to 8. We've got to look at what's needed in 8-9 school. We've got to look at 9 transition to 10. We also want to look at Martinville High School, how it gets in, what we can do to meet its needs as well. All of that's got to be done. We can't do it in isolation of different people out to doing different things. So, this is the group that will sort of be the group that everything comes through. People here will go out and do all of those other parts with other groups, not like anyone here, no one here will do anything on the room. They'll be the connection out to another group that's working on those different areas. So, this is just to get this process begun so that we can meet that timeline.
And you're moving forward with this transition?
My intention is to move forward on it unless there's any concern, any discussion from board.
The question is, do we should wait for this to be part of that, or just need to study the common consideration?
Well, the concern I have is if we wait, then we are not going to be within the timeline. We could end up very easily, if we wait too much like that, affecting the timeline to the point that we don't have the building opened in January of 2021. So, that's, would be my intention. Since the timeline from the architect to us today, we have to get some of these things completed. So, that's my concern.
Many of these groups are already involved at this point. Dr. Frim, I would bet that whenever we have, know who and when the next superintendent will start, they would obviously join in, but to not delay the planning. And another point, I think the chairman, or his duties is going to pass Mr. Griffin as being the Board of Education representative on that transition team.
If you're part of the Morris, it's a compromise.
Can be part of the Morris what?
Group.
That will, this group will decide who's going, that's no problem. We have no problem with this person being the lead here. That's fine. That'd be fine.
What superintendent comes on board, they're going to be ranked higher than this is just one of those pieces. So, really, the ones below that, would be doing most of the more, and even below the board, would be doing most of the, the superintendent, getting in with a strong construction as that person picks up the state and other facets of the board.
This is the group to make sure that we don't leave anything out. Well, that's our plan on, at this point of moving on on the grade 6-7. As Rusty said, we've already started, we have the means, as I said, we're in version five of the facility already. We're going to be looking at, going to visit some locations. We need a board member or two who's going to fly in an airplane, a big, a small airplane, to go and visit some facilities next week. So, we're talking with these folks about doing that. So, all of that is trying to get things rolling so that we can meet the timeline because it's just a matter of a few months, you have to prove our checks at homes. So, we've got to get these things done, okay? Thank you. Next item. Hacks appraisal district, TADs. We were going to be voting on that tonight, but that is, we're going to be requesting that be removed from the agenda because everything is not ready completely from a standpoint of city schools, city and county, and everything that needs to be completed for this. But I have asked Mr. Rannick, chamber of commerce to come and just, I could tell him in a three to five minute, probably three-minute speech he could share with you to. Some of you have been very involved in this process for many months. Some of you are very new at this. So, I wanted Rob to come in and share briefly where we are on this and what's going on. I'm not going to start the clock, okay?
Well, thank you. I appreciate you having me here. As Dr. Rannick said, the city voters voted to create TADs sometime prior to 2015, which was before I moved here. By the end of 2015, we had certified two TAD districts inside the city. One is the downtown footprint, the other one is out on Walnut Avenue in the vicinity of the mall. That is the largest of the two tax allocation districts. There are roughly 75 individual properties within the Walnut Square Tax Allocation District. A little more than a year ago, a company called Hull Property Group, which is based in Augusta, Georgia, purchased our mall. It was their 30th acquisition, 29th acquisition they've acquired one of those. And they are specialists in taking underperforming malls and turning them around and making them perform as a small-town mall should perform. So, they have a model that they use that involves using tax allocation districts to achieve their goal. So, what they do is, is they ask the locality, in this case, it's the city of Dalton, Dalton Public Schools, and would you, the county certify the value of that property at the end of the tax year, which would have been by the end of 2017? The value of that property as it stands today is assessed at $11.2 million. So, once you establish that initial value, then that allows Hull Property Group to go in and make the improvements that they want to make that hopefully would increase, will lead to an increase in the value of that property. But for the purposes of the tax allocation district, that property is only taxable at that $11.2 million amount, okay? And so, what they will do between now and May, once we get this agreement wrapped up, is they will literally tear down about 50% of the square footage of the mall, which would theoretically reduce the value of the mall by roughly half. So, instead of 11.2 million, it would be roughly 5.6 million, okay? Then they go in and they invest 5.4 million, so roughly half the value of the mall, into internal and external improvements during the next six months after they start work. Then they work with national retailers that we would all know the names of, very high-quality brands, to attract them to come to the mall. What the tax allocation district does is it allows any increase in the value of the property to be treated as what's called an increment. So, it's worth $11.2 million today. In a year and a half from now, it will worth $12.2 million, the increment will be $1.2 million. And what Hull Property Group is asking us is to give them the increment for a period of 10 years to, so that they can recoup their investment, okay? What they use that increment to do is to lower their rental rates for the mall so that they are slightly below market rate. So, American Eagle, for instance, would expect a certain rental rate in a market like ours. And what Hull Property Group will say is, we'll use a little piece of that increment to make the rental rate just slightly below what you would expect to be so that you can have a higher return on your investment. So, the tax allocation district is essentially what really makes this work. The danger for our communities right now is if we don't reach agreement with Hull Property Group, they're going to continue to do according to their plan without the increment. The first step in that, as I mentioned earlier, is tear down 50% of the square footage and ask for reassessment. So, instead of being taxed at 11.2 million, then it would be taxed at 5.6 million, okay? So, you've lost 50% of your revenue off of that property right off the bat. But that's not what Hull Property Group wants to do. They want to certify 11.2 and have that be the starting point. So, essentially what they're saying is, we want to hold you harmless at 11.2. Yes, you won't get any additional increment for a period of 10 years, but this year you'll get 11.2, next year you get it on 11.2 for the next 10 years rather than 5.6. So, I've probably overcomplicated that issue a little bit, but if there are any questions that we have.
But in a nutshell, for the first few years, if they were to get below 11.2, we would be gaining some money until they get back to that 11.2 level.
Correct. They're essentially agree to pay tax on that at 11.2 million. Another fact that I left out, the Walnut Square TAD has 75 individual properties. Five of those are included within the mall property. So, there are 70 properties within our district that are outside the batteries of the mall. So, the agreement we are asking for only includes those five parcels that are included on the mall property. The other 70 parcels would not be a part of this deal.
And originally, we had talked for them about 30 years. That has been changed to 10 years now.
Yeah, I'm going to make sure that's accurate, but the last question we had.
And this is, a couple of you have seen, basically, the view of the information I had, and she shared that with a couple of board members. Basically, anything you'd like to share quickly?
Yes. So, the bottom bullet points show the 3.2 million that Hull is asking for. So, for us, we would contribute 1.8, and you can see what the other jurisdiction contributions are. And it's really based on our military rate because Dalton has the highest military rate, we are the biggest contributor. The chart shows different scenarios of those TAD groups and scenarios of 1% growth, 3% growth, and 6%.
And we're talking about TAD 3, not TAD 1, this is TAD 2.
Right. And then the next page just gives you a chart of, for the district, we would continue to get that $400,000, and it's the increment, whatever that incremental growth is, would be used to pay back the redevelopers.
Once they get above 11.2 million, we would hold home at this level. And the amount that we should be getting will go back to them for them to use and try and bring more companies in, better companies in, basically. The reduction from 30 years to 10 years for us is a huge hurdle.
And this example was not what Rod spoke about. It is looking at TAD 3 as a whole versus this one would be isolated to the mall itself.
Right. Which again is a place to ask. And yes, we are the largest part of it because our military rate is the largest amount. It's probably 1.8 versus the discount against the adult. Any questions? This is on the agenda, but because everything is not ready, we are going to request this be removed and placed on the February agenda for approval. I think the city and county will have everything completed, Dr. Good. Okay? Any questions?
Could that, with a little bit more definition, can this be updated?
Once, yeah, probably once we see, like, kind of how we're working this out.
It's a little more firm.
Right.
Because in year 30, you have 75, five is probably okay.
It's a different number, yes, it is. Yes, very much so. But basically, it boils down to, in a nutshell, 60,000 a year.
Right.
Well, that was a 30 years, so it's now.
What I show in the growth, like, you lose about 26,000 initially, but it assumes kind of the growth grows, it's like compounding. So, it averages what Don was talking about, about 60,000, but it really starts off small and ends up larger.
Yes. All right? Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you. So, the next item is a discussion about district priorities and strategic planning. So, just in some conversations with the chairman and with Dawn as we move into budget preparation and also Advanced Ed, which actually looks at whether our district has a strategic plan or not. And apparently, I think we've been hit on that in the past. So, we thought it might be a good time for the board just to briefly this evening begin to, at a 30,000-foot level, identify any potential priorities that you have that then Dawn and the staff could work on and refine and add to, and then we would begin a robust conversation at the budget retreat, I think. And we'd love to have some kind of strategic blueprint for district priorities for Advanced Ed if possible, and then we can, of course, revise and add and amend that. But if it's, we just love to, if any board member wants to say, hey, I would love to see this as a strategic objective or priority, and again, we're 30,000-foot level, we can have that discussion here briefly.
And also, we want to give you a chance here, but also, again, at our, the general chairperson meeting, we're going to give you another chance to follow up so that, what are you thinking about now? If you think of some other ideas and things on the 30,000, so I have another opportunity to give us information for this bill.
I guess some of my background would lead me to go facilities and trucks and maintain more class facilities.
Do you have more knowledge of that year than we do?
I do not have that on the screen. I have it. I can, I can go back and find it.
Do you need it?
Yes. I can go back and find something that was attached to the document.
Please show our expertise and more representation in the organization for our administration.
Other thoughts at this point? And like I said, this is just not going to be defended. You will get another opportunity to share these thoughts before we start.
I would say two things. One would just be kind of an overall assessment of everything that we do operationally and structurally, and just to say, hey, what's working, what's not? Be willing to have that as an objective, quantifiable conversation and evaluation. And then, secondly, and I think we are having these conversations, but student achievement, student outcomes, K through 12 across, across the board, looking at that. And also, I think we have to have an eye on that we're a strategic waiver school system and we have a contract where we have to show CCRPI improvement, so tie in some of these strategic plan or blueprint back into that strategic waiver contract that we're working on. Early education.
Can you repeat that again?
I can't do it.
Early education.
Early education. Thank you. And by early, are you referring to before pre-K or pre-K K? Or all, all of those days?
Yes, what I found. Okay. There are other cities who are investing because wish of this long term, much better.
I think we also, I don't want to speak for Dr. Frum, but I know he did mention a desire to look at the opportunity if we can to start lower class up.
Yes. That gives us somewhere to begin. We're going to start working. This is not a defensive, this is not defensive from you folks yet until after the January meeting. So between now and then, be thinking more, talking, gathering information from us, anything we can do to help you. So that we can, you can, you can narrow it down a little bit more if you'd like to at our January thirty first meeting. And then our goal will be between then and, and as much as we can, I mean, there's only a few days between that and the board retreats. So we may not have a lot by then. But the idea is to develop something so that our budget directives follow and suit the business.
And I, I would also welcome, and you brought a point on this, is just inputs at the school level as well from where they, where they're thinking strategically, direction, blueprint, improvement.
Okay, because what I see here is, just real quick to look at this list, it's one year, three year, five year. These fall out in various places. Although each of them will have a focus here.
Yes. Okay? Thank you. I want to go to the board agenda to look at a few items like quick. Let me quickly move in. Again, we are going to ask you to remove two items from the agenda. One, this item on the tax allocation district, we will put that, the goal to remove that to the committee meeting. And then the contract for the Dalton High School softball field bid, we do need to have that one moved out as the bid came in quite a bit higher than what we had anticipated. So the group's going to get back together again and start looking at the scope of the project to see if we can get the two in line. Rusty, that, does that stand right?
Very good. Very good.
Okay. So those two bids we do want to remove from the agenda, okay? We will have, you'll be voting on the East Lost Revenue Bond. This is simply the revenue bond that we have been working for a file on getting, uh, building authority to, uh, or the C to approve so the building authority could actually begin selling bonds. We have had all the meetings. We are to that point now where we need your final approval of this resolution. And we have a meeting set from the thirty first to actually finalize it all, once this is done. So that's one good one. And this is simply using the funds that we, from East Lost, that we've already approved for the various projects, just getting them up front so we can begin specifically the Brookwood project, the City Park project and some of the technology projects. Okay? So that's one of the voting items. Uh, just to let you know the Harman Field bid right here. We could want to award the bid of one eighteen eight ninety-seven. This bid, we've got to look at, this has been an ongoing pro, uh, pro, we, we had set, we had some money allocated for various projects at Harman Field, the stands, some things on the field itself, the visiting dressing room. The visiting dressing room amount that we had set aside was not enough to take care of the project. Uh, the thinking was that there was going to be some outside donations come in to make it so that that could be met. Those outside donations never came to fruition. So at this point, we want to go ahead with the rails project. To do so, we would need the money that we had allocated for the rails, the amount of money we had allocated for the visiting dressing room, and then an additional twenty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars from general fund to roll in in order for the budget to match our one eighteen eight ninety-seven bid. Uh, this would be, allow us to, and you can, you can take some time, you can look and see what it will do. We'll be putting handrails in various areas on the home side at Harman Field. Uh, no, this is not a legal requirement, but this is a, an issue that we, we feel with, the way things have been going on at Harman Field, we need to move in this direction. So it's putting rails up in the aisles on the home side. Which will make it easier from a standpoint of EBA compliance and things like that as far as health safety. But we've had some people who actually have followed and they try and meandering through the clouds there. When we have their footlong in the huge crowds and trying to lead through having the handrails to make it safe. So that's what we would like to do. But we'll take the twenty-five thousand something out of the general fund to complete the project. Okay?
And what about the dressing room?
That one, again, the, the donation didn't come in, so there's not enough money for that anyway. And it's felt that from a safety standpoint, this needs to go ahead and move on it. And then we want to continue looking at options for the dressing room, but at this point, the funding is not being allocated enough to take care of it. The first unit contract, we will be approving. It's a five year contract, the first unit with ladder transportation. It will be, it's a three point two five percent increase this year, three point two five percent next year, then three percent for the next three years. Uh, we typically do a five year contract with them. This is very much in line with what we've been doing with them. One thing this one does, it cleans up the contract. For the last two contracts, instead of cleaning it up, we've been adding addenda to it of saying, well, we're going to add three more buses. This, this one actually cleans it all up into, into the actual number of what we're, what we're providing. Other thing that we just want to mention, we will be talking about the budget timeline. Teresa will share some information on what we want to present to you as a timeline for our budget. This is an annual process we go through. It's very, very specific. We're going to do it, but we're talking briefly about that as information out of annual talk to look at the, you know, but that's basically the information on the agenda we want to share with you.
Any other discussion in the work session? Will adjourn our work session?
And we would like to invite everyone to come down to the lobby area for a, some brief refreshments just to recognize and appreciation of our new board members. Thank you very much. We'll be seeing everyone next time.